All right, good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, date, place, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. We recognize a quorum with all board members present. The next item on our agenda would be to approve the agenda, and I make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Thank you, Paul. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. So, next, we have a special opportunity tonight for an acceptance of a retirement. And Mr. Lenny Hansen is going to introduce this individual. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, members of the board. We get to recognize retirements each year, but very rarely do we have one that's as monumental as the one that we have to recognize today. In fact, our retiree is here today, so I'm going to embarrass him a little bit. I'm going to ask Neil Deffenbaum to stand up. I know that the board has some words they want to share with Neil. You know, everyone, including myself from my days in Jackson, everybody feels they know Neil because Neil's all over the district, helping every building, and he's been doing that for, as you're going to talk about, an incredible 41 and a half years, actually, in the West Bend School District. So, we're sad to lose Neil. He's been around for a good portion of the lifetime of the West Bend School District here, but we know that he's going to have a great time with his retirement. So, turn it over to you.
All right, will do. And Neil, so glad you could be with us tonight. When I pronounce your last name, Deffenbaum, am I close? All right, fantastic. So, I do have a statement on behalf of the board that I'd like to read. So, the board would like to recognize Neil Deffenbaum, who is retiring after 41 years of service to the West Bend School District. We received a number of words of recognition for Neil from his colleagues that Mr. Dave Ross, our Director of Facilities, collected so that we can share our gratitude to Neil. In 1979, when Neil Deffenbaum started work with the West Bend School District, Jimmy Carter was President to the United States, a gallon of gas cost 89 cents, and Sony introduced the Walkman for a mere $200. Neil started as a custodian at the high school and served in that capacity for 11 years. In 1990, Neil went to the Facilities Department and has worked there for the past 30 years. Over that time, Neil has plowed thousands of miles of playgrounds and pavement and cut thousands of acres of grass. In addition, since Neil has a Class 1 driver's license, he has helped out in the Transportation Department, driving regular bus routes and buses for special student events whenever the need arose. Every year, Neil would also volunteer his time to support the West Bend Public Schools Foundation Gala by transporting auction items to the gala location. And then, after the event concluded, he would be up in the wee hours of the morning assisting with cleanup and then the transportation of items back to the district. Neil is a very quiet, humble man. Many of the things that just happen around the district to make events successful, Neil has had a hand in. In his free time, Neil enjoys the outdoors, spending time camping, kayaking, biking, and, if you can believe it, mowing the lawn. He also spends time with his many friends. Neil has dedicated his entire working life to the West Bend School District. Although he will be sorely missed, we wish him all the best in his retirement. And these words are obviously heartfelt by your colleagues, but allow me to express on behalf of the School Board our thanks for your 41 years of service to this district. And so first, I'd like to start with a motion to accept the retirement of Neil Deffenbaum with thanks for his 41 years of service to the West Bend School District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got multiple seconds here. We'll give that one to Kurt. So, we have a motion and second to accept Neil Deffenbaum's retirement with thanks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and please, a round of applause for Neil. We're very glad you could come tonight so that we could recognize you. Thank you again.
And, Mr. President, I did tell Neil that he would be able to leave following the recognition and not unless he wants to join us for the remainder of the meeting, but you are free to go, Neil. Don't worry. Thank you for everything.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you again. All right. Okay, so, next, we have our students' report. And so, we have Abigail Eckert from West and Emily Huesman from East. I think Abigail is going to be starting, is that right? All right, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I hope you are all staying warm in this frigid weather and are surviving the winter. Classes this week are getting up and rolling again after semester. Last week, students attended their first full week of in-person learning since before Thanksgiving. This week, Global Studies is discussing India's independence from Britain and the impact that important nonviolent thinkers like Gandhi had on the movement. They are also discussing important religious and cultural aspects of the area and how it contributed to the movement. AP Physics classes will be testing their crash test cars soon. In the projects, students must design a structure made of from only noodles, straw, and glue to protect an egg from a five-kilogram cart barreling down a 1.8-meter ramp. This project is designed to cement understanding of momentum and collision safety products. AP Biology is examining and counting kernels of corn to better understand genetics, Punnett squares, dominant and recessive traits, and Chi-squared calculations. In other news, clubs are continuing to find ways to give back to the community even in these times. The East and West NHS are teaming up to write thank you notes to all of the elementary schoolteachers in the district, along with the private schoolteachers. Key Club organized a clothes drive, collecting gently-used winter clothing for those in the community. Trapped inside because of the weather, Seed is watching the documentary on climate change called Before the Flood. Mock Trial competed in the 2021 State Bar of Wisconsin Regional Competition over the weekend. Participants played the roles of lawyers, witnesses, and timekeepers in order to defend and prosecute the case. This year, the team was participating in a fake first-degree homicide case. Despite all the hardships of the past year, the team did quite well and won several of their trials. The West Grad Committee will be meeting on Wednesday. On the agenda is approving the senior gift design of decorating the West stairwell and side window. The faculty speaker has also been selected, and this year will be English teacher Mrs. Schumacher. The theme for this year will be decided shortly. In the Athletic Department, many winter athletes are finishing their season on high notes and are qualifying or competing in state. Friday night, the West Girls Basketball Team can beat conference rival Slinger 56-49 to become co-conference champions for the second year in a row. Austin Barco finished 10th in state diving over the weekend. Ben Bast, Connor Mira Sola, and Cole Mira Sola all remain undefeated and are heading to wrestling state. The West Boys Bowling Team qualified for state as well, along with Addison Jacek qualifying for girls' individual state. The West Bend Co-op Ski Team headed to state last weekend, and the snowboarding team has also qualified. Boys Basketball swept Slinger at all three levels on Friday, and Aaron Tenny's has recently become the leading scorer of all time in the boys' program history. Lastly, West Gymnastics recently beat East in their conference matchup. Lastly, I'm very excited to announce that Madeline Damcott and Lance Ketermsen have been recognized as National Merit Scholarship finalists for their outstanding scores on the PSAT. With only 15,000 recipients from around the U.S., this is a huge accomplishment. That is all I have for you tonight, so drive safe, stay warm, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Abigail. And next is Emily Huesman representing East. Welcome, Emily.
Hello, everyone. I hope you are doing well. These last few weeks have definitely been busy for seniors due to the preparation for scholarships and schoolwork. Luckily, though, seniors got an extra few days to complete their scholarships due to transcripts being backed up. Seniors recently also met the deadline for cap-and-gown orders as well as diploma information. However, though, all this preparation for our future will be worth it in the end. Freshmen and sophomores also have had a bit of a stressful last week during star testing. These ninth and 10th graders took the star test on the 25th and 26th in January. Let's shift to more relaxing topics, like East NHS. They just finished the appreciation letters for teachers and staff in the district's elementary schools. We hope that these letters can lift some spirits during these stressful times. The NHS has also been asked by the East Administration for some ideas as they look to repaint the D hallway. They asked members for a few inspirational quotes that could possibly be added to the wall. The Optimist Club of West Bend is urging students in the high school to create four-to-five-minute speech on the topic, "Healing the World with Optimism." The first-place winner will receive a medal as well as $150. Second and third place will also be awarded a prize, and everyone that enters will receive a certificate. So far, I've talked to some of my friends, and a few people are looking forward to this. When it comes to academics, a lot of students are buckling in for the long stretch. Classes have started, new subjects are in full swing with no sign of stopping. Language and Culture students are learning about argumentative FRQs and how to side on an argument. They're also finishing a read called "In Cold Blood" and analyzing a character's thought process. Online AP Biology students have moved on to learning about fungi and how it reproduces as well as how it affects environment and the ecosystem. Band students have recently been assigned a piece of music to perform in front of the class. They must tell a story with various objects and create a musical performance within the next couple of days. Similarly, orchestra students have been assigned a small group to practice two different pieces of music. They must prepare and perfect these pieces in order to play them in front of their fellow classmates. A lot is going down in East Athletics this past week as well as this upcoming week. East has three separate swimmers and divers headed to state compared to West's one. I believe this proves that East is indeed the superior school. But anyway, congratulations to Jan Lancer and Ryan Meyer. These two went to state for diving, and congratulations to Kevin Fitzgerald for heading to state in the 200 IM and 500 freestyle. Jan ended up winning in the Division 1 State Championship. Excellent job, Jan. And Ryan Meyer placed 15th in state, and finally, but definitely not least, Kevin finished sixth in the 500 freestyle. Great job, you three. East had a great day of wrestling on Saturday. East had one of the most difficult Division 1 regionals in the state and pushed six wrestlers through to the sectionals with three champions and three runners-up. The rest of them fought hard and placed second place as a team. Great job, guys. Lastly, Girls' Varsity Basketball beat West Dallas with a score of 71-48, as well as crushing Port Washington with a score of 81-21. Girls' Gymnastics has a conference meet at Hartford Union on the 12th, and last Tuesday, Boys Swimming beat Rapt in 113-67. Thank you, and everyone you need to stay warm, it's really cold outside.
Thank you. Thanks, Emily and Abigail. Obviously, there's lots of hard work and many great things happening at our high schools. We appreciate you keeping this board and our community connected, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is public participation. I have not received any public participation comment cards. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time for public participation? All right, seeing none, we will move to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have minutes from our November 9, 2020 executive session, the minutes of the January 25, 2021 regular board meeting, dispersments posted to February 8, 2021. There were no contracts to ratify, and I believe two resignations. That's the content of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second, Toni.
Great. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. All right, that takes us to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Well, when you asked if anyone could object to Neil leaving, it would be me. So, Neil is one of the first people on the roads in the morning and does plowing, so his reports are critical in the AM. I did tell him when he came in, I'm like, I still get to call you at 4:00, though, right? Because we actually do, when we make calls regarding inclement weather, you're on roads, you're checking them out, you're seeing if they're drivable, and you're making sure that our fleet can get kids here safely and they too can navigate the roads safely. So, thanks for Neil, for all those early mornings. The kids highlighted that all of our student athletes are kind of making their last run in winter sports for championships. Jan was a very smart student, and as we gave them their send-off last week, he challenged the principals to jump in the pool if we had a someone-take state. I had been to enough swim-and-dive competitions this year to not be a fool to take that bet, but our principals did jump in the pool today in full dress. So, I will make sure to get that posted somewhere so the public can enjoy that as well. That shouldn't be just for those who got to attend.
Sorry to interrupt, but it was on Facebook today.
Oh, good, yeah. I need that to just be out there everywhere. So, and everyone should just give an extra chuckle knowing that John Graff forgot his towel at home. So, might have remembered to spare clothes, but he forgot his towel. So, thank you to them for being good sports and cheering on the kids. We're really proud of our student athletes and have quite a few tournaments left to go as they close out their seasons. Just a note, I was asked in the last week, someone's like, you know, it seems like you guys are looking at things. Like, you have more information than we have when you're up there and at board meetings. I said, well, we sure do. So, just a note to the public, to go right to our website, and under the board page, there's a thing called Board Docs, and in there is everything we're talking about, the agendas, the supporting materials. If you see graphics or visuals or handouts, those are all posted there as well. So, I know it's really hard to, maybe you're taking in a board meeting on your phone. Know that all those documents are there, you can go back and view them. So, that's just a note for our public, or if you wanted to kind of revisit something and look a little bit further, it's all right there for you. So, again, that's right on our website, under the board page, and it's called Board Docs. That's the housing mechanism that holds all the agendas and those pieces. Speaking of sports, the Slinger Superintendent showed up at our house last Friday as their mascot in the owl costume, so despite his intense cheering, as they noted, we did prevail. And he looked really good today, wearing Spartan blue and his Spartan mask. So, we've challenged each other to a rematch. I might look good in red, but I don't want to have to wear it. So, looking forward to the game this Friday. I am going to draw the line at putting the Spartan head on, though. I'm thinking that's, I'm pretty good without that. So, in the last week, I hesitate to bring this up, the last time I was here, and I said the words "inclement weather" in our plan, we promptly had a snow day the next day. So, you can imagine that I'm just a little hesitant. But we did make sure to send out to our families some guidance around inclement weather, not just for if our roads aren't passable or safe, or what if we had a delayed start, or what if it's tremendously cold, and what does that mean, and what are those decision points? So, we gave that clarity, and we also talked with, in those documents around, so what would happen if we did an instructional day? Last time was a snow day. I was cheered on by kids. You know, you walk into a room, I'm like, hey, I'm the lady who gave you the day off, and you get lots of cheers. But we can't do that all the time, and as we were facing this long stretch of potential cold, we needed to make sure our family was completely prepared should we do a virtual day. So, we haven't had that, but those documents are found online as well. They give you contact information should you need emergency childcare. Our onsite childcare stay open and how to access that. And as always, I just want to reiterate to our families that you have the last say in whether or not your child comes to school, whether that's an in-person day or a virtual day. You just call them an absent. So, that is a family's choice. So, make sure and review that information. Again, I've said it out loud, but hopefully I don't need to call one anytime soon. Also, just a reminder for our families, that our 4K and kindergarten enrollment has started for those who aren't already enrolled in our 4K program. That's begun. We already have over 100 students registered. I would like to give thanks to Carol Santini, our registrar, as well as our technology team, for implementing a fully online enrollment process for the first time in our district. This will make it much easier for our families. You can complete it at home. You don't have to recreate lots of different forms for different purposes, also saves time on our end. We don't have to type all that information in. So, hopefully, you'll find that easier. We're always seeking feedback. If there is something we can do to improve the process, don't hesitate to let us know. But again, 4K and future 5K families enrollment is open and online. And also, our Rolfs Education Foundation Award and Support Staff Awards are coming up. So, this is the 50th year of generous support from the Rolfs Education Foundation for certified staff awards, and then the school district also provides support staff awards. So, start thinking about those nominees. Just reminder to the community that you can nominate deserving teachers, someone providing special services, support staff for their outstanding achievements in our district, so I would encourage you to make those nominations. The Rolfs Educational Foundation provides four awards at $1,000 each, and winners of the Support Employee of the Year Award get $300 each, all again recognizing outstanding contributions by our staff. So, you would just go to the West Bend School District website and click on News and Events to see more information as well as those nomination forms. Any questions?
Superintendent, could you take a few minutes and just update us on COVID in general and the high schools specifically, please?
Sure. So, as the students stated, we're entering our second week of full-time. We've been really holding steady in our numbers. While we were in the cohort model, I said I wanted it to be zero, but we did have one who was quarantined during that time. As anticipated, our quarantines have gone up. There's, you know, usually some every day, but we've been very low in any kind of transmission. That quarantine time has tightened up, and then we've also created access for families. It's a month at a time if you want to voluntarily step out during that time. Maybe something's changed in your family, maybe you're looking forward to an important event for your family or yourself as a student, and you just want peace of mind that you won't be subject to quarantine. So, all of that is possible. You just fill out that form. So, we're creating, again, focusing on choice and opportunity for our students. We've also been doing really well on our numbers as far as staff, so we're seeing those level off. Our sub-fill rates, there was one day, Mr. Hansen screenshotted it and sent it to me. He's like, I've not seen any. It was just one unfilled sub for the whole district for the day, which we haven't seen numbers like that since October. So, it was really amazing. The other piece that is really kind of hitting the news right now is our access to vaccines. So, we have, we've been categorized in two categories, both with primary access. 1A, those are people who have direct contact or could receive a stick student. That's our healthroom professionals, frontline secretaries, our principals at our elementary schools who cover healthrooms, people maybe who are supporting students in a manner that puts them in a higher risk. We leverage that. The CDC gave out that guidance. We worked with public health to get as many people as we could in that 1A category. Those people are already receiving vaccines if they should so choose. So, our health department is running and overseeing that. We laugh, it's a little bit like the Wild West, because they get a link, and it's, you know, think of if Packer tickets went on sale and how quick that link goes up and they're snatched up. That's about what it's like every Monday when we get that link. So, 1A is in process. Then, you might have seen, some of us have expressed frustration in many other school district neighbors saying, yep, we're going to shut down one day, and we're just going to vaccinate our whole staff. And we're going, well, why can't we do that? Why don't we get to do that? That's because the Department of Health and Services has declared March 1. They want to make sure that all the vaccine is available. It's either in transit or it's here. They're working to secure the amount, and those who are doing that are going rogue and may receive sanctions to their Department of Public Health. It could impact, so as frustrating as it is, we will hold, we will follow those rules, and we anticipate that next layer, which includes all of our staff as well as contracted service providers. So, our transportation, anyone at our bus company, anyone who's a daily sub for us, all of them are included with ours. So, we anticipate that access being available after March 1. Any questions specifically around COVID, or?
I'm good, thank you.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you to the superintendent for her report. Next on our agenda, we have an information item, summer programming recommendations, and Mrs. Laura Jackson is going to walk us through that. Laura, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. We are here tonight to talk a little bit about the summer programming recommendations. The West Bend School District offers summer programming for students for a variety of Across all grade levels, students have the opportunity to take courses for advancement. At the elementary through 7th grade level, those courses are in the areas of math and literacy to improve their skills or advance them. There are also elective courses in those grade levels that are really just about exposure to different subject areas, to different creativity aspects, exposure to coding, cooking, all kinds of things that they don't necessarily do during the normal school year. At the 8th through 12th grade level, this opportunity allows students to take credits that are required for graduation, but during the course of the summer, offering them more opportunities to take different electives during the course of the school year. We also have courses designed to boost up your skills if you're a little behind or you're struggling, or you've, at the high school level, if you've failed a course, you can do credit recovery or remediation during summer school. So, it's quite a broad program. We also offer some specialty camps to allow students to experience some of the areas like band and orchestra. In the past, we've offered some athletic specialty camps. Some of those will not be running this summer. We are finalizing what our course booklet will look like, and that will be proposed for the board and posted publicly before the next meeting, finalized after the board approves it. But what we're really looking at is the overall idea of a summer program and the board approving the summer programming. For our elementary students, we will be proposing a four-week summer school, which is pretty typical of what we've done in the West Bend School District. This will be starting shortly after the school year ends. Our 8th through 12th grade students, our 8th through 11th, will, our students who are receiving high school credit, will take classes for five weeks. The state has some very specific requirements on how much time it takes in order to earn a high school credit, and so our high school courses are designed to meet that. This year, we will be offering both virtual classes and in-person classes, and it will give students the opportunity to pick which way they would like to do that, although at the elementary level, the elective courses will all be in-person. We do offer busing in the summer from select locations, and that busing is available for elementary and middle school programs. As I said at our next board meeting, we'll present the specific course book and some of those details about bus stops and things like that. But at this time, are there any questions about the idea of summer programming?
Laura, I'm assuming the option of going virtual is certainly a ramification of COVID.
Correct.
What other program changes are anticipated relative to what we've done, not last year, because last year was obviously just a hodgepodge, but, you know, our legacy summer school program and what we're proposing now, are we going 90% back to the old way, or are we dramatically changing things because of COVID still, or are these other more strategic program initiatives?
I would think that future forward, we will always have some virtual options for students because that gives some flexibility. students because that gives some flexibility. We, it allows students to, if their class is asynchronous or their work time is asynchronous, to complete the requirements, yet have their, their, some time with lessons with the teacher in person. So if a student is also working during a summer rec program or something like that where it's always during the day, it allows them that opportunity to earn that income and, and complete the rest of the coursework at night. So I would say future forward, we'll probably always have some virtual opportunities. Much of the coursework is the same as what, last summer, we had some new courses proposed. We didn't run those at the elementary level. We will again have those courses proposed, but we're looking at adding in some coding for our elementary and middle school age students. So that will be new. We want to give them a little more opportunity to try some computer science things out. At the high school level, some of the strength and conditioning camps that we've had, not the course, but the camps, will not be able to be offered this summer. So those are really the significant differences between the, from past programming. As far as band camps and things like that, we're still figuring that out right now, but we hope to have that posted for the next meeting.
Good, thank you. And thank you for being creative in, in, you know, what do our students need? Both in terms of emerging, like the coding, but also, you know, we, we keep talking about these things that we've learned over the last year that, that may continue going forwards and giving students the option of doing an asynchronous, self-directed type of program. Good initiative, good self-starter type of thing, and it's, it's nice to be able to take advantage of those when offered. So thank you.
What's the minimum enrollment requirement for each class that's offered in order for it to be held?
We are going to be looking at 18 to 20 students as the minimum. If it is a credit recovery class, we might look, because that's a course that the student needs in order to stay on track for graduation.
Laura, just to confirm, if there is an individual who attended, a student who intended virtually this semester, but wishes to attend in person over summer, is that permitted?
That's absolutely.
And just, I guess, would, if, if a parent came to you saying, you know, for whatever reason, because of challenges due to COVID, I don't think my child is as far along in math as I would like, or is this a good opportunity to address a situation like that?
Absolutely. For this, for anybody who wants to extend their learning or just really make sure that their student is retaining what was worked on during the school year, it's a great opportunity for that. Within our math and literacy classes, the, what we're looking at being able to provide as far as different experiences for students will allow a lot of differentiation within that classroom setting, whether that's a virtual or in-person class, so that the teacher can work with the individual students on accelerating their need, their growth.
Great, thank you.
Laura, is there a cost associated with enrolling in the summer program?
Summer school is free. However, if you were, if, if the course is a project based and I, you as a student wanted to do a project more elaborate than what is designed, there may be some extra material fees.
Okay. So to piggyback on Chris's question about reinforcing some of the education during the school year, families can elect to enroll in a summer school program at no additional cost and, and get that reinforcement. So to our community that's out there watching, all seven of you, if that is something of interest, I would strongly encourage it. And even just from the enrichment side, my, my girls all did the elementary program and, and found it to be, you know, just so enjoyable to have something to do, but learn something along the way and so forth. But I think this year with the reinforcement side, especially helpful. Thank you.
At the elementary level, we're able to expand on and build and use different materials. At the high school level, one of the requirements of the state is that it is a program, a course that already exists in the course catalog, and that that is what's offered in the summer for high schools. Thank you for your comments.
And just, yeah, just to note, so you talk about new courses and those, those pieces. So a lot of summer school, we, we are really proud of the history of enrichment that we offer at summer school. Those are, classes can be great fun. And certainly our staff suggest ideas, they know their students well, and you know, this would be great and kids would enjoy that. But students, families, if you're out there, if you've got some ideas and think of an exciting course that you'd like us to try, we'd love to hear those ideas as well because a lot of those ideas come right from what the students are interested and engaged in. And we're happy to work with teachers and, and develop courses. And again, you know, if we get that attendance and that's what they're interested in, we're happy to provide.
Thank you. We are looking at opening up registration for summer school, starting March 8th for the high school, and then the 15th for the elementary and middle.
Great. Any other questions?
Will enrollment for summer school be online the way it is this, for this fall?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And just to clarify, this was an information item, and so the board will not take action on it, but thank you very much for the, for the information. All right. Next, we have a discussion item, review of staffing, and that'll be led by Superintendent Wimmer.
Sure. So you might wonder, why am I doing this update? But I want to go all the way back to December where we actually lead the budget process by giving you the format, the calendar, and then we start a lot of cross-department work. In January, the board followed with enrollment. Everything's driven by enrollment and how many students do we have to serve? And we look at our current enrollment and then our projected enrollment. And then the next step in that process is then looking at our staffing, because that's the most important thing we can do, is put amazing people in front of kids and serve in our schools. So I've just highlighted a big overview because then next following would be, so what are the things that the district has as goals? What is it that we want to work on? What are the assumptions we're making about staffing? And what recommendations do we have for staffing? That'll follow at the end of the month, and Mr. Hanson from HR would be presenting that. He works across departments to look at where needs shifting, what might we need. So an example of that would be, in the past year, the board recognized that students would be returning to us with increased mental health needs. So the board approved two additional psychologists so that we have full-time mental health support in every single school, in addition to counselors, school counselors, and family home liaisons. So those are the kind of things we would be bringing to you in our overall staffing plan. And it's our job to identify where needs are, make staffing recommendations based on those needs, and keep everything within the budget. So I thought it would be good to lead just with a quick overview of where we are before we get into the weeds on some of those things next, next meeting. So if you look at that graphic, it's giving you an overall around how we center around all of our students. And you can see the majority of all of our staff are centered right around our almost 6,000 students in certified positions, whether that's those certified teachers, psychologists, counselors, all of those people holding some kind of specific licensure. That's where the term certified comes from. Support staff can be, it can be special education support, it could be supervisory support, it could be a lot of different roles of support. And then looking at our various buildings, grounds, and maintenance, less one since Neil left us. But those are all the supports in and around in our facilities. Forty-eight members of food service, and then 44, what we would call professional and technical, that could be not just in the technology department, but maybe in the HR department. Maybe they're executing payroll for business, all of those kind of nuanced positions. Thirty-seven different clerical positions and our own bus and van drivers for special events. So you can see, those are really centered around our students. Then when you kind of go out, at our school level leadership, you have 18 school administrators. I don't have 18 buildings. I have 10 who serve as a principal role because our early learning and 4K site has Emily Melstrand as its own principal too. And then other assistant principals, athletic directors, et cetera. You have seven central office leaders, myself, assistant superintendents, and a few directors. And then you, the seven-member board. So those are kind of all the big picture supports that are around our students. And then underneath all of that, we talk about FTEs or full-time equivalent. So just because we have this many people, they might make up part-time hours, full-time hours. So we convert everything into what would be a full-time equivalent. So if you look at, so let's pull back the curtain on instructional staff. Well, Jen, what does that look like? You know, how many teachers do we have in early learning? How many teachers do I have teaching fourth grade? You know, what about some of these alternative programs we have? How are we staffing those? What's the return on these investments? So you look at those as FTEs. Do I have a 10th of a person? No, it just means some are in part or full-time roles, and it's calculated that way for staffing and then conversion into budget process. So behind each one of those circles around kids, if you will, you can pull back the curtain and see the exact number of FTE. So when we bring you a staffing plan, we will always put it in the context of what our current reality is. And does this recommendation, you know, provide an increase to, like we did last year, mental health? And what is the cost, you know, for us to do that? Can you pull it off within the budget? We will always give you the context of the current reality. So for each, each domain, again, we'll, we'll pull back that curtain and we'll go in a little bit more depth. And we can also give you a glimpse into class size. A lot of times we talk about, okay, so if I know I have 16 first-grade teachers, what's my average class size? We're in the twenties, for our low twenties for our class sizes. We can package that information for you. So I'd urge you to think about kind of, what do you wonder about? Because I know those things, you know, how many teachers do we have? And what's our class size? What's it look like? Those are questions that people have. So you might have them tonight, and you might have them in the future. Tanya, you have a question?
I know that one of the things that you wanted to look at in the future, and, and this may be playing a part, is at the high school, we have some teachers that are, the number of classes they teach per day is, varies. And that probably contributes to the FTE totals, and I know you'd like to balance that out more. So if you could, if you can speak to that now, that's fine. Otherwise, another time is, is also fine.
No. So in our secondary schools, looking at Silverbrook runs a, kind of a modified secondary schedule where teachers specialize in a core area. So they might specialize in, in teaching English, math, some of those core things. And when you get more into some of their encore exploratory classes, or they call them key classes, you know, how many languages am I, am I offering? What, what are we doing as far as that goes? That's dependent on some student choice, some enrollment. In those secondary schedules, you start looking at sectioning reports. This is really key, again, more so Badger and really at the high school. So you, you bring up a point, I've mentioned this before, scheduling needs to look at, be looked at comprehensively at the high school. We created a system in which core teachers, math, science, English, language, arts, teach one set of classes and have these responsibilities. And then people who might teach art or CTE classes, they have a different class and course load than others. So we really want to delve into the conversation of why is that? Is that functional still? I, I laugh, I will, I will bring it. I know I screenshotted it to our principals. I recently read the 1947 Facilities Report, and on there, it was talking about, here's some strengths of the West Bend curriculum. And it was literally laying out the day at the high school. We had two buildings at the time. It was the McLean and the High School. Those were the two. And it laid out, I said, well, there's one thing, we're consistent. It laid out a seven-period day, a 50-minute class, a median of 25. It was, like I said, we've been consistent because that was from 1947. So it's really time for the high school team, and we've talked about having some outside facilitation. Let's talk about our current schedule and how does it work for kids? And then in turn, you know, how is it helping our teachers plan instruction? We anticipate that work would take about a year and a half to do before any major change came out of that. But thank you for bringing that.
Yeah, I realize it's a, it's not an instantaneous thing, but I appreciate that you're, it's being considered and, and you have a process for reviewing that.
So when we look at, like I said, we can kind of peel back the curtain and analyze these FTEs. We look at our, our class sizes, and it's in each domain, whether it's the instructional certified staff, it's some of the support staff elements. What do those roles do? How are they supporting instruction? And it's just really taking a, a deep look at those pieces. I also knew a piece that you may be interested in, not only as a board but a public, we started a virtual program this year. I can't quite get that to advance from here, there we go. A virtual school. It's not its own school yet. We call it the Virtual Academy, and everyone kind, has a hand in making this successful. But if it were to be its own school, it has 940-some students enrolled in it. So you can see, it's quite a large program. The staff that we have associated with that are simply our teachers, teaching our students. Through our partner with Edmentum, they're bringing multiple teachers to the table as well, but this is just the staff that we're responsible for. So again, having that choice was really valuable. Again, as Laura was talking about with the summer programming, you know, we would fathom that some might take a mixed for not only summer school, but perhaps even into next fall. So we're talking about what, what does that look like? And in our projections, we will, we will make some projections around virtual programs for the future and what that should look like, so that we can plan for the budget. Any questions about kind of how we peel back the layers of staffing, what you can expect to see at the next meeting, or things that you would like to see?
So Superintendent, I'm going to go off on a limb here and chase down a bit of a rabbit hole, just trying to read the tea leaves on this. But if we look at K4 on the Virtual Academy, we've got 200 students effectively. So given our class size, that's about 10 classes. And if you go up and you look, and I'll stay on the instructional staff, I'll stay looking at kindergarten through fourth grade, because I'm, I'm assuming by the time we hit fifth grade, we've got some economies of scale that kick in at Silverbrook. But if we look at fourth grade, where we've got 16, third grade, we're down to 15, second grade, we're up to 17. Can I somewhat derive that maybe we've bottomed out and our numbers are coming up a little bit again, down at the lowest levels?
So we did see a lot of students return at semester for face-to-face instruction. So you see that stabilizing. I think that if you were, like I said, want to look at the tea leaves, I think we'll probably garner back more face-to-face students into our early learners. Our, our class sizes are a little bit different in a virtual program because you can do synchronous or asynchronous delivery, meaning that you're live in front of your teacher, that might be small groups. So their class sizes are a little larger as well. So if you're adding up and dividing out, you're like, wait, this looks, looks different. But I, I think we'll have a lot more return to face-to-face in the early learning grades. I think also too, once we, again, a rough start and, and interesting hard learning year for everyone, but as we kind of smooth out into, you know, less rough waters, I think also too, we might garner a lot of those families who are choosing to be at home and do homeschooling. This is an amazing resource for those families too. So, you know, what we lose to people who made this decision simply because of COVID and not wanting to go face-to-face for a myriad of reasons, you know, they may return. But again, we need to promote with our other families who might be choosing homeschooling that this is an amazing resource to support your wish to do education at home with your students.
Cool, thank you.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for that report. And the next item then on our agenda is the Pupil Nondiscrimination Report. And Mrs. Jackson will be presenting that item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Each year before the board, we present what's called the Pupil Nondiscrimination Report. This is a report required by the Department of Public Instruction and the Office of Civil Rights, which, in which we report out reported incidences that have been, and the investigations and the outcomes of those reports. The information you have before you is well explained by Sharon Kalas as she developed the report. It's consistent with reports you've had in the past. And what I would like to foreshadow is that last school year, our, a team of people from the district, and I'm so sorry I didn't bring all of their names, but Lee Lumens, Tina Van Rue, Zach Daniels, Carrie Hughes, amongst others, all worked really tightly to look at the behavior codes that were in place in our district. The behavior codes are within the Skyward entity, and, and individuals who are reporting behavior select those codes. behaviors select those codes to describe the behaviors that they're reporting and documenting. Our team looked at the number of codes and what they meant, and really narrowed the number of codes available to be selected. In the future, this report may look a little different, because there has been extensive time spent in, in working towards consistency, and ensuring that we had the right codes for reporting the things that needed to be reported, the things that we were seeing, and the behaviors that were being documented in our sites. So we did some training on that in February with all of the administrative team, and again, we paused our live administrative meetings during the spring semester. We've had a little bit of discussion, but there will be ongoing discussion throughout Future Forward in this year regarding our behavior coding and the processes we use to document those behavior incidences. Are there any questions about the report itself?
Any questions?
Are you looking for a motion and approval on this tonight?
No, just that the report simply needs to be presented to the Board of Education, and then available for public review.
Great. All right. Thank you for presenting the report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have our committee reports, and a report from the chairperson of our Curriculum Committee meeting from February 2, 2021, Erin Dove. Erin?
Yes. So the Curriculum Committee met last Tuesday, February 2nd. We had three curriculum updates that were provided. Those included social studies resources. If you remember back, the board adopted the Wisconsin standards for social studies last school year, and for the sixth grade, they were still looking for a resource. The stakeholders reviewed seven, or excuse me, five resources, and selected one, National Geographics Global Issues. So that will be used going forward. The second item that was updated was EL Services, and that's English learner. And we talked about how we're implementing the board policy that was approved last school year, and that's being done through individual learning plans for those English learners. And then those that have graduated through the process are being monitored on a, on a monitoring plan. The third update we received was a program review process, and that was just talking about how certain curriculums are reviewed on a cycle. And upcoming reviews will be done in math, and health, and world language. Then we had three items up for discussion. The first was ELA standards. Over the summer, early summer, Wisconsin adopted new standards for ELA. And our, our staff has reviewed those over the summer, and then this past semester, they were previewing them and working with them to get familiar and understanding them. And they're really, the new standards are really responsive to student needs, and really will be more comprehensive. And so looking forward to using those going forward. Those will be reviewed to the whole board in a future meeting. The second discussion item was about academic progress update, and I think we've talked about this before, but due to COVID, DPI is not releasing state report cards. So we talked about that, and while they're taking this break from doing that, they are looking at new format. So we had the opportunity to review kind of a generic addition of what that new format could look like. Much of the same information, but laid out, I would say it's more visually appealing, more graphs, easier to read. And then the third item for discussion, I'm not going to really talk about, because it was summer programming recommendations, which we already heard this evening. And so that's, that was our meeting on Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Any questions for, for Erin?
Sorry, interject one item?
Sure. Please, go ahead.
The only point of clarification is that the sixth grade social studies will be brought forward to the full board at a future date for approval.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the clarification. And thanks to the member of the Curriculum Committee. It sounds like there was a good discussion on a broad variety of important topics, so we thank you for your work and taking a deep dive into those topics. Under Items for Follow-Up and Communication, is there any other, any other items to, oh, pardon me, I skipped over the board meeting calendar. So speaking of the Curriculum Committee, the next Curriculum Committee meeting will be on March 2nd, 2021. And then as it relates to our board meetings, our next board meetings are on February 22, March 8, and March 22. Now, are there any other items for follow-up and communication? All right. Hearing none, I would make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, number one, vision for compensation, and number two, superintendent evaluation process. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Your motion, and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? My recollection is, this is something that needs to be done by roll, call, vote to enter executive session. So I'll pull up the random sheet, and I will call the roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Mr. Zweigert votes yes. That's seven to zero. Thank you. And we are now adjourned into executive session. We appreciate everyone's attendance and for watching at home. I'm told we will be moving to J30.
Okay.
Not much to me.
Yeah.
Just follow the train.
J30.
I know, and like someone else.
No.
It still doesn't mean anything.
It don't mean anything.
We're going to come back here, aren't we?